Order City Forest Park, Council Meeting Number 1309, March 5, 2018. Let us stand for the pledge, please. Clerk call to roll, please.
Burns?
Here.
Collins?
Here.
Herbie?
Here.
Holt?
Yeah.
Johnson?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Ness?
Here.
The record shows that all members are present. Next item number two is the minutes. You should have all received a copy of the minutes in your package. Are there any questions, corrections, or additions to the minutes? Hearing none, we move to item number three, presentation. We have no presentations on the agenda for this evening. Item number four, communications from the public. This is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comment or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to five minutes. Is there anyone in the public who would like to address council? If so, please come to the podium, sign in, and tell us who you are, please.
My name is Beverly Trotman, and I am a resident of Forest Park. I have lived here for 30 years. I've been a homeowner for 28 years. I'm here before council today to talk about the income taxes that are charged to citizens who live and work, uh, who live in Forest Park. I did invite some others to come with me, but they were a little hesitant to come. This is my third time coming here to this podium, and I'm here to appeal to the newer council members because my concerns about the taxes have fallen on deaf ears to the former council members when I've been here before, written two letters to council about the taxes. So I'd asked the new council members to consider the income taxes that were enacted in 2014 and how it lowered the, um, the amount of credit that we receive. Uh, I work in the city of Cincinnati, so I'm taxed extremely high there, and I get no credit here in this municipality. I'm still working, I'm not retired yet, I'm a college-educated person, have a graduate degree. Um, I'm blessed to have had, have a, had a good job for many years. So like, I'm like many others, I'm in my highest earning years because I could retire pretty soon. So I'm, I'm greatly taxed in the city of Forest Park. And I pay Forest Park a tremendous amount of money. And I hear many neighbors say that that's why they have left the city, because of the taxes. My recollection is that this issue was on the ballot some years ago and that the, the citizens here voted it out, did not want the tax increase. But the council decided among themselves to enact the tax anyway, or reduce the credit. So I just wanted to say to the new council members, um, please, in some of your discussions, ask the council to revisit the taxes. What I hear from a lot of other people is they don't see a recreation center. Everybody whom, who I talked to say, "Well, we don't get anything for our money." That's what they say. "We don't have anything, a recreation center for the youth." I said something when I was here before about the tennis courts having been resurfaced when only maybe 1% of the citizens of Forest Park use the tennis courts. So I, I just wanted to say that I think the taxes, um, need to be revisited because I'm sure if you reside here, you hear the same complaints from the people who live here. It's a constant conversation. Even from people who live outside of here, they're constantly saying, "Ooh, Forest Park taxes are way too high, that's why I, I don't, I'm not going to go and live there." Younger people are not necessarily coming here to live because they're concerned about the schools. So it's just something that needs to be revisited at some point in time. I hope you will, you will have the mind to walk it back, um, the 2014, 13, 14 decision, or put it back on the ballot and let the people decide. Because they did say no, and council decided yes against the will of the people. I think that was very unfair. And that's all I have to say.
Any comments? Two is, two cor, two, two corrections. One, this was never a ballot issue. And two, uh, we have no control over taxes, uh, that are levied by the school district.
What about the income tax? The income tax?
It was not, it was not a ballot issue.
My recollection is that we voted it down.
Mr. Hodges. Anyone else from the public wants to, would like to address the council? Yes, sir?
My name is Shawn Davidson, the manager of the Forest Park branch of the Public Library of Cincinnati in Hamilton County. I'm here tonight to briefly update council on the latest activities of your Forest Park branch, in addition to sharing some information regarding the library levy that will be on the ballot of the May 8 election. In 2017, over 115,000 people walked through the branch's doors. 147,000 items were checked out, and there were over 29,000 computer sessions for those accessing technology that is needed to apply for jobs, go to school today, and much, much more. Additionally, 4,400 children, adults, and teens attended programs and events, and our librarians visited 1,600 residents outside of the library at schools, daycares, and retirement centers. 2017 was a year of change as well, as we began offering several new services. Last November, for instance, the Forest Park branch began offering after-school homework help for students kindergarten and kindergarten through 8th grade. Uh, in just that short amount of time, we've already held over 100 sessions of homework help after school. We also began offering curb-side service for book, book pickup and return for those customers who may have limited mobility or just looking for convenience as they check off one more errand to complete in their busy day. Also, as of last summer, anyone can now schedule an appointment with a librarian to get one-on-one help. And just in the past couple of weeks, I've seen our staff help folks with filling out job applications, navigating government assistance programs, um, learning computer software like Microsoft Word and Excel, which are needed just for basic employment today, and learning about new technology that runs our world today, like smartphones and tablets. Other highlights include several very popular events for Black History Month, including African-American genealogy, the local history of the Underground Railroad, and the Masai African drummers. So as you can see, we're a very, very busy place. Overall, our library system is one of the oldest and busiest in the country, with nearly half a million cardholders. In fact, 80% of Hamilton County households include at least one cardholder, which is pretty incredible when you think about that number. However, our, our library's state funding has been cut by 26% since the year 2000. During that same time, our circulation, or just our language for the amount of materials that have checked out, has gone up 60%. Our library has not increased its budget in nearly 20 years. With the levy on the upcoming ballot, our library can provide each community with a branch that is well-maintained and up-to-date, which includes repairing and replacing roofs, windows, brickwork, brickwork, parking lots, in the particular of our local branch, and work that has been put off because of lack of funding. With this money, we will also ensure that all 40 branches are handicap accessible. Six of our locations in the county currently are not. Furthermore, we'll continue to purchase enough books, reference materials, and other items for customers, and we'll continue the programs and services that I just discussed, like homework help, summer reading, and assistance for residents looking for jobs. With that being said, early voting begins April 10. An election day, as you know, is May 8, and citizens can register to vote and apply for voting by mail at any library location. Thank you again for providing this time for me to share this information, and I hope to see all of you at the library someday, see some familiar faces here already, but hope to see all of you at our branch. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? From anyone? Mr. Hodges?
Just one clarification. Is this a renewal or new tax?
It is an additional lev, one mil levy.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make, um, a comment, not concerning, but, um, Ms. Trotman. You and I, in the same boat. I work in the city of Cincinnati, and I live in Forest Park. So I'm paying those taxes too. I feel the taxes too. When I voted on the taxes, you know, to, you know, accept the, to raise it to the 25, or Lord, to the 25, or I O, you want to call it, I had to make a conscious decision. Did I want enough firemen to take care of my family? Did I, in case I had a fire? Did I want enough police officers on the street to take care of my family? I feel your pain. And no, it does not go unnoticed or unlistened, it's not being ignored. If there was a way that I could cut these taxes today, I promise you, I would do it. Because I feel your pain too. I work in Cincinnati. I'm at my higher level two of salary, can retire at any time. So it's not something that council is ignoring. Trust me, we're not ignoring that, because I feel it too. And that's all I want to say.
Anyone else from the public wants to address council? Hearing none, thank you all.
I would like to say to the gentleman from the library that, uh, thank you for your service. I've often, uh, been a visitor at the, uh, libraries, both of them, mainly the one on, uh, Hamilton Avenue, and the place is always so busy. It's always packed. If you drove past or went past, you would think that they're giving out money, it's so packed. On the weekends, on the evenings, you all really serve the people, and thank you for your service. And that's all I have to say.
Hearing none, seeing no one else, we'll go to the next item. Item number five, reports of standing committees. First of those standing committees is the Law Committee, Councilwoman Collins.
Uh, I have no report from the Law Committee at this time.
Any questions for Councilwoman Collins? Councilwoman Collins, for the work session on the 12th, I have no items on the agenda for you. Do you have any to add?
No.
Next report is the Human Resources Committee, Councilwoman Holt.
I do not have a report tonight, thank you.
Councilwoman Holt, uh, any questions for Councilwoman Holt? Hearing none, Councilwoman Holt, I have no items on the agenda for you for the work session on the 12th. Do you have any to add?
No, I do not.
Next report is Public Improvement and Facilities, Councilwoman Moore.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just want to let everyone know that we had a follow-up meeting with the 5th and 6th graders at the Witten Woods Intermediate School, and it was a wonderful, um, presentation. I was truly, truly impressed, um, with their presentation. And even though we had the presentation here at, in city council chambers, um, just seeing the students in their own environment was just, just awesome. And so myself, the Public Works Director, Assistant Chief Hill, and Mr. Steve Denny, we're in attendance, and we are in the planning phases, and, um, we just ask for your support in the future with dealing with this issue. Thank you.
Any questions for Councilwoman Moore? Councilwoman Moore, I have one item on the agenda for you for the meeting on the 12th, uh, the road program. Do you have anything to add?
No.
Next committee report is Public Safety Committee, Councilwoman Ness.
I do not have any reports to add this evening.
Any questions for Councilwoman Ness? Hearing none, Councilwoman Ness, uh, I have one item on the agenda for you, that's the Community Programming Board, Board Reapartments. Do you have anything to add?
I do not.
Next report is Ways and Means Committee, Councilwoman Herbie.
Um, yes, I wanted to give you, uh, kind of an update on what's been happening with the Economic Development Commission, which met just this past week. Uh, we had a presentation from Ready Cincinnati, which is the Regional Economic Development Initiative, and, um, they have helped us with several projects over the past several years, including the VXI expansion, TP mechanical expansion, CPG expansion, uh, helping us bring in Hope Bridge, a new business, and helping us with the retention of Emeritas. We, this year, we increased our, um, level of contribution to them, and this has provided us with, um, uh, more access to key decision-makers and also access to customized demographic and marketing data that we can use in our own business attraction efforts. Also, um, in the pipeline, we have a great deal of activity going on. We also have some, uh, recent, uh, businesses that have been attracted and have, uh, had ribbon-cutting ceremonies welcoming the Women's Center of Forest Park Square, the MHS Medical Supplies and Hutchinson Home Care opened new distribution facilities in Kemper Meadow Business Park, and we're working with a developer who could help us redevelop the 690 Northland Office Building, um, converting that undeveloped property to a medical office consistent with one of our goals in the city, is to attract more medical facilities into the city. We're also working with a business retention project, considering a move into Kemper Meadow and a new business prospect that could build a facility in Carolyn Business Park. Also, finally, with economic development, um, the, the recent tax cuts and job acts of 2017 created an opportunity for community development programs, uh, creating opportunity zones. This is a tax incentive for investors to invest unrealized capital gains into opportunity funds that can be reinvested into zones designated by the governor. The governor is getting from the counties recommendations for sites, and we have submitted three possible sites. One is on our Western Gateway, uh, in the, off of Hamilton Avenue. One is in the Witten Road Corridor, and, which includes the mall. And one of them is along Northland Boulevard, which is really, uh, of greatest concern to our Economic Development, uh, Director. And so we think we have, hopefully, a good opportunity to get some of that money. We think we have strong, um, arguments for that. And finally, I wanted to also tell you some of the things that are going on in the Economic Development Program. I will repeat that we have paper shredding outlet here in the lobby of the municipal building for small amounts. For larger amounts, mark your calendar, Saturday, May 5, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., there will be, um, opportunities for recycling, large amounts in paper shredding, large amounts of, um, um, paper. Also, the residential attic insulation air sealing, the results to date, 30 homes have participated. The average cost per home improvement is $1,741. The average subsidy and rebate that is coming from both our environmental awareness subsidies and Duke Energy subsidies amounted to, on average, $1,118, leaving the cost to the resident of $623. Also, I want to remind you that the citywide yard sale will be taking place also on May 5, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And on behalf of Mrs. Moore, who didn't mention some of the spring activities, the breakfast with the Easter Bunny is Saturday, March 24. Um, and there are two events going on for the seniors. One is an Evening of Elegance Ballroom on Friday, March 23, starting at 6 o'clock, and a senior spring fling on Friday, March 25, starting at 7:30. And that would conclude my report.
Any questions for Councilwoman Herbie? Or corrections? Hearing none, Councilwoman Herbie, I have one, two items on the agenda for you for the work session. Amendment to Chapter 101 Tax Code and Reappropriation Ordinance. Next committee report is Mr. Burns, Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report. However, if there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Any, uh, questions for Mr. Burns? Mr. Burns, I have one item for you, New Soul Glassworks Art Project. Do you have anything to add?
No, thank you.
Last report is Intergovernmental Relations and Communications. That's my, uh, committee. I have no report. I'll be happy to answer any questions if there are any. Hearing none, we will move to item number six, the mayor's report, just briefly. I did attend, uh, as a guest of the, uh, on an invitation from, uh, the Chamber of Commerce to the grand opening of the Women's Center. And secondly, I would remind all council members that if you have not yet done your, uh, annual report for the, uh, Ohio Ethics Commission, you should get that done. You can do it either, um, on paper, or you can do it online. One of the, the benefits of doing it online is that each year, you just have to go in and check the information and make sure that everything, that, uh, those things that have not changed would, would be still there, they're portable, and, uh, just, uh, it makes it very easy to add or make corrections. So if you've not done that, you need to make sure you get that done. Uh, within my report, I'll answer any questions if there are any. Next report is the City Manager's Report, Mr. Hodges.
Thank you. I'll report only that the departmental reports have been completed, they've been included in the council packet, they've also been placed on file for public inspection with the clerk of council. So that would conclude my report, but I would respond to any questions if there are any.
Any questions for the City Manager? Hearing none, thank you, sir. Next item is item number eight of the reports. First of all, being Law Director, Mr. Whitecroft.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I recently assisted Mr. Anderson, uh, with a tax lien issue and what happened in a foreclosure share sale. Also, I provided a, an opinion to our clerk regarding, uh, certain public, um, records requests and whether a roster or directory of employees' names and phone numbers would be included in that. Uh, it's, uh, finally, we've had a habitual offender of our dog leash rules, Wade Hill, Jr., and last Monday, with the assistance of numerous police officers, he was convicted on 10 additional charges, sentenced to 30 days, 25 days suspended. So he's got five days on each of the 10, running consecutively for 50 days. And Judge Rucker is trying very hard to get this man's attention. The sentencing actually stayed because we're anticipating, as he has in the past, he'll appeal these to the 1st District. But the 1st District, two, three years ago, already ruled that our ordinance was constitutional and enforceable, so, um, we keep going around in a circle with this gentleman. It's unfortunate, but we're doing, with the assistance of the Police Department, everything we can do, and, uh, now Judge Rucker has pulled out the hammer, so hopefully we'll get this problem resolved, because I know it's affecting neighbors on his street, it's affecting the delivery of the mail, um, it's been a huge problem. So that's the end of my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the Law Director? Hearing none, thank you, sir. Next report is Clerk of Council, Mr. Duxell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance number 01-2018, resolution number 03-2018 through 05-2018 were posted as required, and that concludes my report.
Any questions for Clerk of Council? Hearing none, thank you, ma'am. Move to item number nine, you've been, is there a motion? Mr. B.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read by title only, Resolution Number 606-2018. This resolution was posted six days prior to the meeting.
Second? Then moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read by title only, Resolution Number 06-2018. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is item A, Resolution Number 06-2018. Would the clerk please read this resolution by title only?
Resolution Number 06-2018. A resolution confirming appointments to the 2018 Hamilton County Incentive Review Council from the city of Forest Park.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Uh, I would move adoption of Resolution Number 606-2018.
Second.
Been moved in second that we adopt Resolution 06-2018. Uh, is there a discussion? Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, this is our annual, um, uh, motion to designate two representatives from our community to serve on the Hamilton County Tax Incentive Review Council. This group, um, annually renews and reviews enterprise zone and tax increment financing agreements as required by state law, and in the past, we have designated the Economic Development Director, Paul Brim, and the council liaison to the Economic Development Commission, which is myself, and I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on Resolution 06-2018?
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Resolution 06-2018 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is a motion. Councilwoman Herbie?
Um, I would move to reconsider ordinance number 29-2017.
Second.
Been moved in second that we, uh, reconsider ordinance number 29-2017. Is there a discussion? Councilwoman Herbie?
Um, yes, as we do every year in December, um, we passed an, we passed a resolution, um, that contained a number of miscellaneous fees, and they included, um, fees for parks and facilities, false alarm fees, um, life support service user fees, motor vehicle accident fees, treatment without transport fees, and other miscellaneous fees referring to public records, return checks, delinquent account collections, and limitations on payments by coin. At the request of, um, Councilwoman Collins, uh, she, there had been some concerns that she has about the $25 fee that went into effect in February of this year for reserving shelters in Kemper Meadow Park and Central Park, as well as the Picnic Grove in Central Park. It's been pointed out that our Parks and Recreation Commission, which is made up of residents or electors, in total, seven members of the public, have discussed this item several times before recommending it to city council. The concern about this particular fees has been discussed informally among council, uh, as an extension or piggyback on other issues. It was formally put to a works, on the work session agendas for discussion on January 22nd, uh, February 12th, and February 26th. Each time, it was rescheduled for further discussion because it was reported that further research was still being done. We've had a, um, a, a legal opinion from our law director that, um, the city, because it's a home rule, uh, city has the authority to establish such a fee, and so it was determined at the last, um, work session to put this up to council for a vote to determine if we wanted to continue discussing this matter, reconsider this issue. If you wish to reconsider this issue, please vote yes. If you choose not to reconsider this issue, please vote no, and frankly, I would urge voting no.
Is there any other discussion on the matter?
Yes, I would.
Yes.
Like to respond. Okay. I firstly learned of this intended fee for the use of the shelters, uh, by almost City Manager, Ty Smith, who touted it as a fundraising measure for the city of Forest Park to accrue money. Minutes from the Park and Recreation Committee meeting dated, uh, for the month of May 2017 are suspiciously lost. These minutes would have accurately reflected any public input, discussion, and/or [inaudible]. These minutes would have accurately reflected any public input, discussion, and/or opposition to the fee, or even lack of public attendance at this meeting to any degree. Park and Recreation Meeting for the month of June stated the purpose of the fee was to replace locks when the, um, residents lose the keys. I have asked for documentation of all the lost key lock replacements from 2012 through 2018, which was used to show the need for this fee. I have been told that no actual documentation of replaced lock exists. I ask why we don't just require a deposit for, since not all residents lose the key each time? So why are we charging a fee each time? I was informed last week that this fee is going to be used to grant exclusivity to the residents for use of the shelters. I made the point that it does not cost the city additional money to grant exclusivity for the use of the area, so why are we charging the residents a $25 fee for it? It is my personal observation how the citizens enjoy the use of those, the exclusive use of the parks, especially during the summer, for, uh, family reunions and, uh, other organizations that they may belong to, and that the use of our shelters is a very popular thing. It is one of the, just one of the areas in which Forest Park is actually getting it right when it comes to delivering happiness to our residents for the use of their tax dollars. As pointed out earlier in this meeting by our citizen, we don't have a recreation, uh, a recreation facilities for our children to use during the summertime, even after school. We, we, we don't deliver that to them, and over the years, it's become increasingly loudly, uh, expressed to us by our citizens that every other city around us delivers that service to the residents, and we don't have that service. So, I would, I, I think it's, I think it's foolish of us as a council body to, to- require a $25 shelter fee with the intention of raising $2,000 each summer or each season, when that $2,000 that we earn will cost us a lot of respect from our citizens, a lot of support from our citizens, and will cause hardship, especially if sometime in the future, we intend to perhaps, uh, place something on the ballot so that we can raise money to, uh, build a recreational facilities. I think our citizens have had enough. We are, we don't have to do this to them, it's almost a slap in the face to the citizens who are already saying they are not getting enough for their tax dollar to take the one area in which we don't additionally require money and start requiring money simply because we have looked over and we've seen how popular that is with our citizens. I, I did read the, uh, City Manager's memo to us earlier stating that he had asked the insurance company about recreational immunity. Now recreational immunity, in a nutshell, says that if you, if you don't charge a fee for use of your property, then you enjoy recreational immunity, meaning if someone gets hurt on your property, uh, you're not liable for their, uh, injuries. However, if you charge a fee for use of the property, then it becomes a proprietary act or a money-making act, so to speak, and you're required, you lose your recreational immunity and you are responsible, liable for their damages, just in a nutshell. Um, I did read, uh, Mr. Hodges's memo, and I'm wondering exactly what question did he ask the insurance company, because every other lawyer that I've spoken with in every other city, uh, surrounding the Outer Belt, and at the Hamilton County Municipal League, uh, meeting that I attended this weekend, all of them defined recreational immunity as something that is granted to a city or a landowner when they do not charge for use of that space. The minute you charge for use of that space, you lose it. Uh, because I did not have the time to actually grab the statute, and that's a very important issue, where we may wind up raising $2,000 a summer, however, the legal liability, just on a broken arm, if someone were to break their arm within that space, would be $25,000, starting at $25,000, and then it gets higher than that. I, I really don't think that we are looking at the big picture of where Forest Park wants to go as a community in doing this, I think it was, especially where I asked for the information pertaining to changed locks and lost keys, and, and none exists. I'm, I'm just baffled at how this issue got all the way to council and we voted for it to be, we approved for it to be a part of the fee schedule, when even in the committee, they can't show us any substantiating information pertaining to the problem. It in any case, I seriously urge us to not put this issue to bed and let there continue to be a $25 fee being charged for the use of our shelters. I think this issue should have been placed, uh, in a town hall meeting specifically on the issue, not simply in the Park and Recreation Com- Committee. It should have been heard there, and I think the people's voice needs to be heard if they're already screaming over taxes, to add a fee on top of the taxes that they're paying for services that they've said many times they aren't receiving to their level of satisfaction. I think we're, we're just doing ourselves a disservice.
One more minute.
No, I, I can stop now, but I will end with, no matter what the votes are here, if, if we don't get rid of it by this council, I'm gonna ask for a referendum be placed on the ballot on the issue, and let the people decide whether or not they want to pay $25 to use the shelters when it's not costing us $25 to deliver exclusivity for the use of the shelters, and their tax dollars is alr- are already paying for their use of the shelters.
Anyone else got any other comments? Councilwoman Herbie?
I don't understand the passion for opposing this. My family has a family reunion every year, this year, my, my immediate family is hosting the family reunion for us. We rent from the Hamilton County Park District the use of a shelter for considerably more than $25. It's for exclusive use of that shelter. Other communities have similar fees for use of shelters in their parks. This is not uncommon, $25 is very reasonable. I don't see the, I don't understand the, the opposition to this, and that's why I would urge voting no on reconsidering this motion, or this, uh, resolution.
Are there any other comments? Hearing none, the motion is to reconsider ordinance numbers 29-2017.
Mr.? Mr.? I have to admit that I, I still, the, the way the motion is listed, I really don't understand what I'm doing. So, in, in voting yes, I'm doing what, and in voting no, I'm doing what?
The motion is to reconsider the ordinance, meaning that we will continue to discuss whether or not to have the fee. To vote no means that the issue is closed and the ordinance will stay in effect. Now, again, all those in favor of the motion of the ordinance, let it be known by the sign of voting aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, by sign of voting no.
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 The majority has voted no, so the motion to reconsider fails. The current ordinance, ordinance number 29-2017, will stand in effect. We will now move to item number C on the agenda, it's a motion, Councilwoman Holt.
I would like to mo- make a motion to convene to an executive session to discuss the person, personnel matters of the recruiting of a recruiting process for a new city manager.
Second. It's been moved in second that we convene into executive session to discuss personnel matters slash recruiting process for the new city manager, is there any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, would the clerk please call a roll on the motion for executive session?
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Nuss?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Uh, at this time, we will go into executive session, and by rule and by law, no official business will be taken during that session. When we are done, we will return and, uh, reconvene the regular meeting at that time. At this point, we're gonna adjourn to go into executive session.